Put in place the Astringent is what we use for alcohol. I want growers and retailers to be inspected regularly by the state. And if you don't believe my numbers, then just use common sense. If you approve X number of licenses, how many inspectors do you need to have? And I say inspector is not law enforcement agents. Inspectors deal with health and human services. And that's what should be going out there. I want you to continue to provide for the therapeutic use of marijuana. I firmly believe there are families, their children, their elders that rely on this medicine. The first exposure I had to medicinal marijuana was a former Marine, a retired fire chief, who said, Sheriff, I don't know what catching a buzz means except what they say. Catch a buzz, I see that change. He says, this only makes me feel more. He was suffering from a pancreatic cancer. Okay? He succumbed to it, but for the time he had access to medicinal marijuana and working. He was just concerned his son was committing a crime purchasing it. So I want, I pray to the committee, provides for affordable medicine for those who need it and have a relationship with that material in a medicinal fashion. I want to make sure the tax revenue is dedicated to educating minors about substance abuse, not just of marijuana, but of wild substances, even the most popular drug of all, alcohol. I think this is extreme money we could use for that. The other thing I want out of this bill is a commitment to test and evaluate the product. If we're going to make it legal, we need to make it safe. Right? There are a lot of war stories about adulterated marijuana. I'm not sure it's adulterated. Most retailers want recurring customers, but there is a chance for moles and other infestations that should be checked for. And I want you to look at the possibility that this is in fact an economic development tool. This will create jobs, it has created jobs. I'm shocked that the growth of the caregiver industry, I never dreamed it would grow to this dimension, but it works. And frankly, I represented caregivers as an attorney, and we've gone from caring for patients, which is what we thought at first, to now, almost 15 years later, there are questions around business formation and business operation questions. What do you do with the revenue? We've created an industry, by the way, that has no way to bank its money. It's all cash. Right? And we've got suspects in our society. We need to do something about that. We need to understand that they have limited tax creditability or deductibility, like other businesses. So when you answer most questions in these bills, you're really engaged in economic development and policymaking. So that's where I want to end. I mean, I guess I could give you 20 more minutes of testimony, but I'll leave with this. One, prohibition is a failed experiment, period. Right? And I know there are police officers across that country that will stand in this room and attest to that. Second, we do have a major drug problem in the state, but it involves opium addiction, and we need to bring every resource to bear on that problem. And a new industry in the state with a new revenue stream coming to Augusta to help us defeat and meet the needs of those individuals. So I'll end with that. Like I said, I trust your ability to read my testimony. I will say, moving forward, we're going to give you an information booklet that summarizes all of this detail. I remain open to questions, as does my co-sponsor, Representative Battle. We'll do what we can. But I'm a realist, I know where we are in the session, but I think we need to get some work. We really truly do. Sometimes there are policies that demand that kind of attention, and I think this is one of them. So thank you for your attention.
Senator Jozoski.
Thank you. Are you standing in here?
I was confused by the recent promotion to Senator, but I'm glad to be back where I'm at as Representative. Go ahead, Senator.
Good things all come at a given time. Truth in advertising. I'm one of your co-sponsors of this bill. And I have a question that I remember asking Representative Russell last year, and I'd like to give you some sort of a brief answer on how do we tax something that's illegal? I know Colorado and Washington, but Maine's a southern state, and I don't know how we here in Maine are going to be able to put a tax on something that is federally legal.
Well, we already do in terms of collecting sales tax from caregivers providing patients for the product. Here's the interesting thing. I think caregivers and dispensaries and dispensaries, just go take a look at their books, they want to be legitimate citizens. They want to make lawful contributions to our economy. We can collect the taxes, but we lack our resources to make that collection as efficient as possible. I know we crossed the line, I think it was last session, when one of my Republican colleagues stood on the floor of the House and raised the question as to how much money should we actually put from medicinal marijuana to the current budget? I mean, once we start talking about that, I think we can do our job and collect it. It has been coming in, but we don't know if we're losing something in the margin right now.
Because I think there's such a loss in translation. We have, as you well know, I've served on two different cash wars, the other is medical marijuana, which I would have completely separate issue, and the President and Attorney General of the United States have both made declarative comments on that experiment. We're talking now about recreational marijuana, which I've kind of influenced the vote.
It is, it is a different vote.
And that's where I'm wondering how we tax recreational marijuana. I know we'll learn through about the medical, different scenario for recreational cannabis. Is it a number that?
I think, first, we'd have to adopt seed to shell model, where we track plants. And there's a variety of options, but I'll make it simple for today. We are doing that with medicinal marijuana. The marijuana doesn't know if it's being consumed for medicinal purposes or recreational purposes. We would apply that same methodology. And I think you just need to go to a dispensary, Senator, and I would invite all of you to a dispensary, because they're doing just that. They have, God, they have a chief financial officer. Okay? They have CEOs. They have, they're set up like a business, and they track it accordingly. And that's all we have to do. And I think if we talk to the main revenue service, the reliability of the tax stream coming from dispensaries is probably less suspect than what's coming from caregivers, only because some caregivers are not set up to do that kind of tracking. I think we'll see that evolve. God, I see software now that can do just that. It tags a plant all the way until it hits the store shelf. They want to recover the potential profit, and they're willing to give up their share of taxes in order to do that. But that's going to be a piece we'll have to work out.
Representative Tuns.
Thank you, Representative Jim. Representative, I know I did practice on associate and senator. I want, I want to go back and add something to what was asked by Representative Jeanette before. And this can seem ridiculous question, but I want you to respond to both questions. Would you say that heroin has become a very serious issue in Maine?
Yes.
Could you see yourself in a few years, someone standing here, like us standing here, saying, which is legalized, that, like?
You want me to be really honest?
Yeah, sure.
No, but I mean, that's, look, the easy answer would be say no. All right? Then I get to walk, and we're all set. But having and still working with heroin addicts, I could envision, at some point, we have to give them some kind of medication to manage their addiction. You would agree that heroin changes the chemistry of your brain? So I'm only reserved, no. I'm trying to answer it like a doctor, and I should, because that would be dangerous. I'll answer it this way. There is no social benefit to heroin now. Everything about heroin is a negative. So yes, heroin should never be legalized. However, I could see treatment plans where some combination of heroin and another drug would help people taper their need for that drug.
So, can I follow up? The other issue that I was gathered, right now, when you sit here and listen to all the sheriffs, everyone, and you talk about their prison population and 80% of them having some kind of a substance issue, and then we add another issue to this, and research that Representative Russell paid indicated that there would be a certain percent of that population that would become addicted, and we don't have facilities for treatment. What is the treatment plan going to be when you add more to the population, but you haven't been able to solve the problem with all the individuals that are addicted now? What is the treatment plan? How are we going to do that?
Well, let me go to the beginning of your questions, Senator. These are good questions, and I don't know why you thought they would be ridiculous. I think they're good questions. The first thing is, let's not buy this assumption that we're adding something to the mix. It's already there. Okay? Everyone who's using is using. Our making it legal doesn't cause a surge. All the young kids who think they're going to get it like they got their dad's Budweiser, we're going to still be there to say no. Everyone who is smoking cannabis or adjusting into today is doing that. So we just need to decide, do we want to regulate that so they can't overconsume? I mean, that's what we do with alcohol. You can't buy if you're intoxicated. Can't make a lawful purchase. Now, the reality is, for every rule, there are people that are happy to break it. So I see the future where we have what we have right now, polyabusers. They abuse what's available. If it's marijuana, they take that in, they drink, whatever, they end up in jail. This doesn't take away that reality. What we should be considering is, if that's why they're in jail, and I would say that's why they're there, because they have some toxic relationship with a substance, I can tell you jail's not working. Just like it's there, jail is not working. It's a real expensive defeat. All right? What would work is treatment then. So when you consider building a new prison, which you'll do that in this committee, or new jail cells, I'd say, hey, let's have some therapy. All right? Let's confront that piece. So it's, it's already there. Although, here's the ironic thing, I'll close with this. In prison, though, what's the most popular thing coming in? Cigarettes. Cigarettes and Suboxone. Had a woman tell me, Suboxone's out of control. I go, what's the message? Well, Suboxone's out of control. We have a lot of addicts, and they're trying to medicate their own addiction with Suboxone. See, if you think that everything's in hell, you look for hammers. I'm just saying, start to look at drug use as a public health issue, and get new strategies.
Representative Joy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Dion, thanks for being here, and thanks for putting in the bill. I remember four years ago, two years ago, we talked about the same direction. And I'm in the line, I believe it's a proper direction to go with, to give it to the people. But I do have a question for you. On the global sheet, for everyone, the front page, yeah, under possession, I noticed that Representative Russell has six mature plants and seedlings, where you have three mature plants and six seedlings. You're going to have to help the allocate. With the seedlings, what's the difference?
See, these are where lawyers make their fee. I'm meeting the seats. There's a concept, regulatory concept over at DHHS, but not all marijuana plants are the same. I was brought up professionally. Once it broke ground and had the proper leaves, it was a marijuana plant. In our regulatory environment, it's the female plant, butted, that counts as the consumable. And then depending on the height of what we call a veg plant, it says no buds, will determine whether it's a seedling or not. So what Representative Russell and I are just trying to say, I'm saying, we have three plants and six seedlings. She's saying six mature plants. Mature means female, butted plant. Mine's not that complicated, because I always try to think about, can this be performed by the lowest denominator? So I want that officer to be able to make a quick decision, or that inspector, that it's a proper number of plants. The one thing that most police officers don't stay right now is the number six. You can only have six plants, or what kind of plants? Why they get six? And then they have to check on their laptop, it's a female plant. Then you get this one. Right? A female plant, I'm not quite sure. The older officers, more experienced, will say, oh, that's wrong with buds. I don't want that kind of debate. If someone makes a complaint, you have three plants growing and accompanying seedlings, then you'd be lawful.
As you can see, I've been on the committee for a little bit, but I try to at least say as much as I can here to see what the differences are. The other one is that Representative Russell has one to two and a half ounces is civil violation, and yours is for a person under 21 possession is a civil violation. What would be the difference there? Do we, if you have a?
On hers?
On hers, it says for a person under the age of, excuse me, under the age of 21 possession of two and a half ounces is a civil violation, where yours just says that a person under the age of 21 possession is a civil violation. So it's, it's nothing.
Yeah, civil violation is just an infraction. Is that what you're? For a person under 21 possession is a civil violation. But she's saying, for a person under 21 possession, under two and a half ounces is a civil violation. You have to ask her why she said that.
We're good.
Well, I guess my question would be, if I put both of you together, would you come up to one definition that would suffice for both of you?
Yes.
I mean, you know, it's not etched in stone, I understand. And I understand also your direction as looking into the law-abiding part of it, to have strict enough rules to control, but yet not too strict to be cumbersome.
That's right.
If I'm on the right direction.
What I'm trying to do is caution, cautious, roll up. Okay? It's, I don't want to be all, this bill shouldn't be all things to all people, like tomorrow when everything's out there. This, it's a graduated increase, and it'll be dictated by what happens in the market. If there's big demand, there'll be more retail approved. And somebody said, well, you like the old state liquor store model. And I go, exactly right. When I was a young man and forbidden from having alcohol, I used to sit in a car. My father went into this brick building with green windows and came out with a paper bag. Now we have agency stores. The market has changed expectations, and that's what I want to drive this market.
Representative Wong.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. We've heard testimony this year from large enforcement and other people stating that marijuana is a gateway drug. I just want to know what your response to that would be, because that's a question we've all heard, we've explained, and I would just like to give you an explanation for that.
I'd say, tell them the truth. And here's why. Everyone that they have contact with has some sort of addiction issue. That's why they surface to the top. And any drug is a gateway drug. If you really talk to an addict, they tend to be equal opportunity consumers. They might be addicted to heroin, but if there's something else available, they're happy to take it. So anything would qualify as an addictive drug. I tend to believe those who become addicts have a biological and psychological predisposition to get involved in addictive behavior. So if they're presented with a drug, they overconsume. Why is it? The better question is, how many of us here who look normal have engaged in consuming those drugs and been able to move forward? There are a lot of people in your community who can tell stories about their own use of cannabis, and it hasn't ruined their life. And they can say, Representative Russell talks about bourbon, for which I have no affinity, but she seems to have one. That's the question. I would suspect if you're an addict, eating close to any addictive substance is a jeopardy decision for you, so.
Representative Tom.
Thank you. Representative Dion, so people would be able to have possession of plants?
Yes.
And I assume that means that they grow their own?
Yes.
How do we tax that? Because this is being proposed as a tax.
Well, you would tax that the same way you try to tax my brother-in-law for making beer in the cellar. You won't be successful. And that was a concession in the bill. For the most part, we're looking to encourage the market, but at the same time, we want to respect the right of a citizen to grow their own, as they would be able to create beer. They don't tax that.
Representative, the Madam Chair, so my question is, how do we, how does your bill make sure that it protects the folks who've been participating in the very successful medical marijuana program we have? That's, that's my personal concern, is folks who've been playing by the rules and are, you know, creating small businesses, providing medicine to folks who need it. How do we make sure that taking this next step to legalization, we're still protecting those people? Caregivers, dispensaries, et cetera?
Well, I think when you, first of all, there's two ways to look at it. One, you don't impose a tax levy on medicine, like you do on consumable appropriation purposes. Second, you do exactly what I propose, cap the number of caregivers. Now, surprising, some caregivers go, oh my God, that's a negative. It's not. It's a cap so that we can assess what's going on in that market, and have we been able to supervise it appropriately. It's a chance for the legislature to say, let's take a breath. The fact that every single session, you have a dozen or more marijuana bills, ought to tell you things are evolving so quickly out there? We don't even get a chance to take a breath. So I'm saying a moratorium, so we can evaluate that. I don't want to deny a family medicine for their epileptic child. I don't want to deny the ability of a caregiver to take care of people that have a terminal cancer. And that's why I propose that in December of 2016, we simply cap it. As we all know, around this horse show, what we decided in this session can always be amended by a future session. And I think there's a value to taking stock of where we are in the caregiver community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety, I'm Mr. Kenneth Battle, and the representative of District 33, which is far to South Portland, the West Side. And for the past 27 years, I was a police officer in South Portland. And I'm here today just to give you some support of the 1401. Instead of, I'm going to go reading this whole thing to you. I've got a lot of other people up here who have got a copy of it. I just need to do some, some quick highlights, because to be honest with you, the one thing, whenever I have a state representative coming up here to talk about legalization of marijuana was one thing I sure as heck did not think I would be doing. The, like I said, I was a police officer 27 years before that, I was the Coast Guard, I was active duty. I personally seized over 50 tons of marijuana. Lobster boat like that one, Q West, Florida, I could set up tons, tons, and just fills this room, packing them. And as a police officer, I got to see a lot of different uses of it. The reason I agreed to co-sponsor, I wanted to see this stuff, because I just didn't want us to open the door, throw the door open to Colorado here, and say, hey, have none of this, okay? I did call up to Colorado as one cop talking to another. I talked to a small town, I promised the guy that I would not say the town or department where he's a school resource officer at, and, but had, back then, do communication before him. And I asked him what the skinny was, what's going on there in your state, really since legalization? He said, for the first weekend or so, like the second weekend, okay, it was, it seemed to be, he could smell a lot more around, around the community and stuff like that. He said, at the school, he did not notice a little lot of talk, but he didn't notice it anymore in that area. And after that, it seemed to go back to, back to the norm. Didn't, time didn't go up, it wasn't assaults, there wasn't major problems, and there wasn't a whole lot of fools waiting to stop signs, waiting for the dirt green. So it was, he said, it was, like you said, it was more talk than anything else. And he said, he seemed more yippee-hippie on the news than anything else. Representative Wong, you asked earlier about marijuana being a gateway drug. Do you know where the dirt comes from? Movie Reaper Madness. When they were asked about it, the director said, he made it up, it sounded good. It wasn't based on any kind of background. Astrid is a, there's one thing that people keep referring to as a gateway drug. The, yeah, I guess we can't call it that. Same thing with alcohol. You know, it's his, I guess in the normal progression. I am, I'm addicted to smoking cigarettes. Okay? And have been for a long time, keep hoping it'll stop my growth, doesn't work. But I, I never was into, never was into marijuana. I never was, like I said, in a lot of the world, and I've been subject to drug tests. I was on the Coast Guard when I was 21, when they started the program. I was 23 when they, when they started the program. Now, I'm a, I'm a captain, I have a master meritor's license, I drive a school bus, and I'm sure once somebody seemed to be here testifying, I'm going to get a call again, and I'll be getting taken to another drug test, which is fine, I'm not a user. Does anybody have any questions? And I'll quit babbling at this point, but like you said, you do have a copy of my testimony, and you know who I am, and I know you have a lot of people here behind me.
Yeah, we're looking forward to hearing from the public, and thank you very much. Any questions for Representative Dow? Sina, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sina. Have a good day, and thank you.
Okay. Coast wants us for either bill now, representatives for either bill. Co-sponsors for either bill now, representatives for either bill. You're a co-sponsor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, which one?
1401.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, esteemed members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. My name is Chuck Peters. I represent Coast District 53, which is President, Warwick's Georgetown, Atlantic, that's part of Richmond. I'm here today to testify in favor of L D 1401, an act allowing and regulating use of adult cannabis. Because this issue really needs to be dealt with. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people in Maine that use marijuana as a legal type of their day, and I'm not here to tell you that I support that, I didn't. And I don't think we need, I don't think, I think we need to take a close look into people's personal choice to use marijuana, and view like a person's choice to have a couple beers after work. Representative Diana has put together a bill that will create a strong baseline for us to work with, without the chaos that we've had about the other states that have already legalized marijuana. This way, we can collect some data about what the market looks like, and the votes at Bablo can make determination about the size of the markets and the need for expansion. This plan to go slow and grow, and grow with demand, will provide us with solid regulation and give Bablo and law enforcement the tools they need to move forward. The black market is a huge part of the problem. It appears, it appears to be a walk like during the alcohol prohibition days. The illegal money should be taken out of marijuana business, and we should control it like alcohol. The revenue from marijuana will come with good management regulations and enforcement for quality. And I want to talk about, just a little bit, it's not my testimony, but anyone in this room can get a medical marijuana cap today. The medical marijuana program's done a lot of good things, but it's a fast. All it did was bring drug dealers into the legal world, and it's making the black market prices stay high. But people who need medical marijuana for cancer, autism, other diseases, that's a good thing, but they could do it with the synthetics. So the fact that when we talk about the medical marijuana, all we did is make it so the black market prices stay high. We need to take the money out of marijuana so we can get rid of the illegal trade. And that's, that's a fact. You know, I say, "Let's put together a good bill that makes sense for, for Mainers," because the problem's still here. We're not going to get rid of it. All this talks about is that it's gateway drugs. The gateway part of it, Representative Battle may be right where it came from. I don't know where that term came from. But when the kids who are highly susceptible go to the black market dealers, and they don't have weed, they buy something else. We really need to deal with the black market issue of this product. Make it legal, regulate it like alcohol, and stop worrying about the tax. That will come with good management. And, you know, we spend sixteen hundred and fifty dollars an hour to keep a helicopter in the air to search people's fields. Have a number of constituents who are PO'd, and like to shoot those helicopters down, and they scare their horses, drive them through the fences because they're hubris so low at the field, and send their livestock running. Stop wasting that money. Take and go after the heroin and the archicoto dealers. That's where the problem exists that Mainers face with the huge spikes in drugs. Thank you. I'll do my best to answer any of your questions.
Representative Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You mentioned the black market several times, and the kids, is there still going to be a black market? Will the kids, anybody under twenty-one, if they want to get some marijuana, they're going to have to find an illegal dealer, or the parent, but they work.
You bring, talked about a good point, Representative Wong. First of all, they can do that with alcohol now, the parents can buy it. If you take the money out of the black market, you're going to get a lot of the illegal drug dealers who are doing the wrong thing out of the market, because they're not going to sell an ounce of weed for fifty bucks. I think right now, medical marijuana is around three fifty, four hundred dollars an ounce. If you, I don't know if that's fact. I don't use marijuana, I don't care to, but I do care to get that black market profit here as that.
So no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other co-sponsors for either?
Yes. Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, and honorable members of the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. My name is Dean Rikerson. I represent District One in the State House, and that's serving most of the category. First, I'd like to offer some advice to Representative Russell, is to keep the bourbon in the freezer. Then, also, since we have talked about this so-called gateway drugs, I actually, coincidentally, about a month ago, heard a story on the radio about an article in Science Magazine, and about some researchers who were looking at, with a pretty large, a pretty large sample number of heroin users, and what, and what they had started with as far as any kind of narcotic, and the vast majority of them had started with cigarettes. And that was in fact more relational to the heroin use than marijuana. So that was an interesting story, since we've been talking about it. But here I am, I'm testifying in favor of L D 1380, Representative Russell, who will be acting legalized, not to regulate marijuana. And in the great divide that is politics, I call myself a liberal libertarian. In my veins is a healthy blend of liberal economics and strong civil liberties. It's that area between liberal and libertarian, and it's precisely where to live the issue of whether to continue prohibition or replace it with a system of regulation and taxation laws. The war on drugs has cost us hundreds of millions, trillions of dollars, and we have little to show for it. Kids are fleeing Central America with backpacks to escape the violence from drug cartels. And those drug cartels are largely funded by the consequences of our own war on drugs. This is a cycle of violence that has absolutely nothing to do with cannabis plant and everything to do with prohibition. And in this committee, you're looking at how to pay for the jail system, most of which is overridden, by people struggling with mental illness and addiction issues. And it seems backwards, it would criminalize mental health, health and addiction, while getting the treatment coming. Representative Russell builds.